Good evening, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty in the evening and the sun is just, it's just starting to get dark. It's so nice that we're having some spring. Some spring like weather before we get ice, mud and snow. So for anybody watching, please make sure you take care of your pipes, hoses and cover your faucets. Let the record show that all the council members are here and happy. See, I see those smiles on everybody. Really appreciate that. And counselors, you have the minutes of the January twenty-sixth meeting in your packet. And do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes as presented to us in the packet.
And I see counselor Martin Willis shaking her head and putting up two fingers. So I'm taking that as a second. I have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye. And hearing no opposition, motion passes. Thank you very much. Under visitor comment this evening, Josh Brant from Brant Sanitary is going to give us an overview and an update. Mr. Brant, welcome to the independent city council.
Here, it looks like Josh Brand just dropped off the call.
Okay, well, we'll just, well, when he gets in, please interrupt me and just add him back in. Okay?
Will do.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Karen, is there anybody else out there? Okay, we're going to move forward. Let me give you a little bit of a report on what's coming up for yours truly. Coming up next week, I'll be meeting with Congressman Schrader and a number of other elected leaders in the area. And we'll be talking a little bit, as you know, Congressman Schrader serves on the Commerce Committee in Washington DC. And so we'll be talking to him about ways that he can help our community. This last week, we had City Hall Day through the League of Oregon Cities, City Hall Day at the Capitol. Although that was virtual, we did have an opportunity to talk to a number of legislators and and a number of us electeds and mayors got a chance to visit with some of the new legislators and help them understand the issues that cities are facing and also help them understand that. Don't provide a lot of, don't give us lots of mandates and tell us what to do without providing the funding and let us have local control because we know what we're doing here. Also coming up this week for myself, myself, Mayor Kuntz and representatives from Polk County and our respective city staffs from Independence and Monmouth will be meeting with the Pacific Source folks talking about access behavioral health and access in our community, trying to increase that. And so that's a continuation of a series of meetings and I'm very encouraged with with what's going on there. Until we get Mr. Brant back on, I'm going to turn this back over to the city manager and let him make his report. Mr. Passamere.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, I wanted to thank council for a great priority setting meeting that we had on Saturday. I know that was a long day, but it was extremely helpful to me and to staff to kind of know what we need to be focused on for this next year. So so thank you for that. You can expect that we'll bring back the final list for the February twenty-third meeting. So just you guys can review it, make sure that we captured everything correctly. So that's coming up. I have a few announcements and some other things tonight. Some of them are somewhat important. I have some information that we just released on all of our social media outlets in both English and Spanish regarding the COVID vaccine. The state asked us to share that far and wide. So I'm just going to kind of read you some of the stuff that they they put out, just so you kind of get a flavor. But older adults can start getting the COVID vaccine on the following dates if you're eighty or older, starting February eighth. So that was yesterday, seventy-five and older, February fifteenth, seventy and older, February twenty-second, sixty-five and over, March first. They say that appointments are required and you will most likely not get an appointment right away. Vaccines are scarce, but every week the state gets more doses. Eventually, everyone who wants an appointment for a vaccine will get one is just going to take some time. While vaccine providers can't give you an appointment as soon as you want, they can give you different ways to get linked to vaccine information and events. And then we release some information on where people can go to get information. The two primary ones are covid vaccine dot Oregon dot gov and or call two one one. My understanding is the two one one system is a little busy right now. But there's also some other numbers and some more information on there for people to get information. A couple of notes, vaccinations are free. And it's my understanding in Polk County that you must have or set up a MyChart account. So I think this is kind of a call to people to be be aware of your your neighbor or your family members who might need assistance. Setting up a MyChart account, my understanding isn't overly difficult, but there are some things that you need to do and you need to have access to a computer system and be able to go in and put certain information in. So be aware that if you have a have a neighbor who you just haven't had a chance to touch base with recently, go over check, see if they they need a hand with that, see if they need some help with the cold weather coming. And just just be neighborly and make sure that you're taking care of of those around you. A couple announcements from the library, hotspots. Those are hotspots for yes, data connection like a puck or information are going to be available and we'll start going out next week. Right now they're training the staff on how to distribute those. The current system is you must call the library. They're not going to be available online. And everybody knows that the demand is going to be higher than supply initially. The Independence Library has ten to start with, and I think they're going to target some people that they know have data needs. But certainly, over time, those will be available. The cooperative is going to do a review after sixty days and depending on the usage in different communities, they'll move them around within the cooperative to to have more communities have more of a need and then move some out. So the they're not, they are not going to be available line line. And that was partly because that was the way the grant was written. So this is a is a grant program and it's something that they're really trying out. But it will provide an opportunity for people who don't have good access to to get some access by calling the library, checking out a hotspot. So something new. A reminder, the library will be passing out free children's book this free children's books this Saturday during a curbside checkout hours, which are ten AM to two PM. They have a selection of books in English and Spanish and they will pass out a free book to anyone who requests one. The Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency is seeing almost two thousand households that say they need help in paying rent. And the agency has already distributed about six point six millions to about fourteen, six point six million to about fourteen hundred households in the last round of round of funding. So there's going to be another round of funding coming up in Polk County. Even though Polk County has about twenty-five percent of the population in the service area, renters only received about twelve percent of the monies and that's just because they weren't requesting it. So we're going to certainly promote that and I want that to to be out there. And if people need that, they can take that opportunity. My understanding is that rent assistance covered more than just one month. It covered multiple months for some people. So if you have a need or if you know someone who has a need, please, please ask. That's a that's an opportunity for you to catch up on that and maybe continue on for for a long time where you're at. Just a note, we are going to resume shut offs for non-payment again in March. It's been a while since we have shut anyone off in their water system for for non-payment. You'll probably remember that we use a pretty compassionate model and we're going to repeat that. It was really effective last time. We still have funds available in our utility assistance program and if we need to add more into that program, we will. And just some numbers on that, in the past, we assisted about fifty-three families in Independence. Most of those were low income or Latinx. And on average, I think the debt was around seven hundred dollars for for those. So you know, we have additional resources there. But there's also additional resources available in the community that we've heard and we're going to kind of wait to activate those until we've actually run through this utility program that we currently have, which is based on carers money. So make sure you take advantage of that if you need to. So but we definitely want to make sure that nobody actually gets their their water turned off. We certainly want to work payment plans and work everything else out that we can. And so we'll be very active on on getting that. But what we found is if we go too long without catching up, then people get so far behind that they can't catch up. And that's that's worse than 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 anything else. So. You've probably heard and the mayor mentioned it, it's going to get cold, you know, probably very cold. I think that's the one thing that we do know. I think there are some questions about how much precipitation might accompany that coldness. But the warming shelters will be open. I think they're actually open now. The mayor mentioned frozen pipes. It's also good to run a little water in the outside wall and open up your cabinets and put a frost protectors on your faucet. The latest forecast that I have from the National Weather Service is kind of, I'll just read it to you, is snow and or freezing rain is expected to begin across most of the interior valleys during the late afternoon and evening hours on Thursday. The threat for freezing rain and ice accumulations have increased considerably from Salem southward. The threat for accumulation of snow has increased for areas to the north of Salem. So I guess that puts us snow, freezing rain, snow, freezing rain. I don't think we all know. Maybe nothing, but certainly I think that the potential is there and we want to make sure that people are aware of that. It says precipitation should become more showery in nature on Friday, but additional snow and ice accumulations are expected. And so this is just a call to make sure that that our residents, they should be aware, they should have supplies on hand, make sure that they can get through the weekend. And certainly, we're going to do everything that that we can to to make things happen. And I'm actually going to have Ken Perkins, who's our Public Works Supervisor, come in and kind of talk about some of what we do on the roadways and the equipment that we have, just to let you and everybody else know kind of what to expect if we do get either snow or freezing rain or 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 something else. So Ken, are you out there?
We see your name, Ken, and you're still muted.
Hello there.
Good evening, Ken, and welcome to council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors, Tom, Karen, Jason. Anyway, I'm Ken Perkins, Public Works Supervisor, as Tom said. Just to give you a little input, I've been here in August. I'll be here twenty-seven years. So seen a couple of storms throughout. I was even here in ninety-six when we flooded. One of the things, the biggest, one of the biggest things I like to state about Public Works when we have events, whether it's a windstorm, which we've had, ice storm, snowstorm flooding, it's the time when Public Works meshes the most, works best together as a team. And it sounds kind of, for us, it's kind of fun because we're just so involved in it together. We all get along super great. It's our best working environment. And so I think we've done really well with our events. So that's the first thing I want to talk about. I'm going to go through the steps of what we do when we have events coming, in particular tonight. When we be talking about the snow and ice and as Tom stated, you know, we don't really know. I don't think the weathermen know either. But we'll just run with it and we'll prepare for, you know, something heavy. And if it lightens up, hey, that's even better. The first thing that we that we do when we know an event's coming is usually Giselle and I will talk and we'll get something going on our social media pages and we'll try to let people know to like Tom had stated earlier, you know, we don't want them to have freezing pipes. And so run your water, open your cabinet doors, cover your faucets, and then we'll say stuff like, if you don't need to go somewhere, try to stay at home, make sure you have supplies. If you do need to go somewhere, take your time, be patient, you know, look out for others, you know, that type of thing. So we try to do that with our social media, first of all. After that, I initiate calling, we've got a contractor that we have do our de-icer. He actually works with the county and does theirs as well. He's got a great truck that he works it with. We've got a route that we do throughout the city. It's the main loop, really. We don't go down and do all the side streets. We never have. It's just, it's too hard to do. But we even helped Marion County with the bridge, you know, and whatnot, get made the major curves, you know, where people could slide and stop areas at the major intersections. After I contact him, I get with the crew and we discuss the prep of what we need to get done and get ready. We discuss teams, whether we're going to have two or four, that changes with the scenario. If it's drastic, we're having a lot of people in, but we still have to make sure that we have rotation. If we have minimal work, we still use at least two people. That way we're being safe. And you know, because we always have heavy equipment and whatnot. So want to make sure that we're teamed up or somebody's getting tired, you know, from working at three in the morning till six in the morning because we've done it, whether it's power outages and what have you. And then we'll talk about the call outs and stuff from dispatch. Some of the things that we do when we're prepping for these storms, and even though it's a snowstorm, we prep the same like we would for an ice storm, rainstorm, ice storm, windstorm, all that. We prep our saws because a lot of times we have trees go down. We've got a lot of big trees here and some old historic trees. So we prep all our chainsaws, we diesel up all of our vehicles and backhoes, dump trucks, have all that ready. We go around, we've got multiple gen sets throughout the city and including the shop at the Civic Center at our wastewater and water facilities. We go and we double check those. We make sure that our battery backups are good. We just did that just a couple of weeks ago and put in some new battery backups. We also check the diesel at those facilities to make sure that those diesel can run, you know, throughout the night. We also fill up our diesel tanks and gas tanks here through Mark Nelson to make sure that we have reserves. And then we also get our plow ready. In this case, because of snow, we get our plow ready and a sander. And then we have radios that we can talk to each other and also talk with the PD. In regards to the plow and the sander, this was some equipment that we purchased about two or three years ago. I think about ten years ago, we purchased a really old sander from Oregon City through League of Oregon Cities. And it was a very good purchase. It did good for us for a while. It's just very ancient. So with one of our bigger trucks, we got a newer sander and a plow that goes on front of that truck. So the plows on front centers in the back so we can plow as we sand. Sanding, we've done the plow. We haven't really used. We use it a little bit the other day, but the plow work, you need six inches or more of snow. If you have two or three inches, it doesn't really do anything. So that's mostly when you're sanding. If we have the contractor coming and de-ice, that's where we start first on the roads. If it's dry, if it's wet, we can't put it down because it will just, it will just make the de-icer not work. So we're looking at possibly Thursday, since you might have rain Wednesday, we're looking at possibly doing the de-icer Thursday, if we can make it work with his schedule and everything else he has to do. And then that de-icer will work for a while. If we keep getting ice and snow coming and all of these intersections just keep getting used and used, eventually the de-icer isn't going to work and everything compacts. Then you get your ice, you get slippery. So that's when we start going out and we get the sander and we sand and that helps at the intersections. And then eventually that will go away or get, you know, snowed over and we'll go back out and we'll sand again. Like I said, on the plow, if we have a great deal of snow, we will use that. And we would be able with our plow to clear the major intersections, major streets. Addition to that plow, we got a walk behind motorized plow broom that we purchased that same year and we can use that at our facilities. We just did this last snow over at the Civic Center. And if the library is open, we can do it there as well. We try not to do as much now with, you know, like salt and stuff, because that is bad for the concrete. We have to do it around the steps, but we're using this new push behind broom plow and it works great. So this equipment that we bought, you know, we haven't really used the last couple of years, but we've already used it this year and it sounds like we might be using it again. As we go out and sand, we'll split up like certain hours and we'll have a crew come in and then we'll rotate out so that we make sure we have fresh people so that we're being safe. Does anybody have any questions so far? I'm sorry if I'm randomly too quick. So you guys can just, it can slow down or I've got a question. So just, you know, let me know. After that, we prep everything before the storm. I send it out in email or if I'm gone, if I were to be gone, maybe in Montana visiting or something, then whoever is here at Lead would email the the PD and city staff and obviously the city manager and basically let them know that, hey, we're ready to go. This is what's going on. So just let you know, we are set, ready to go. So we're always prepared for these storms ahead of time. The last storm, Tom emailed me and I said, yep, we're ready to go. He said, I thought so. And I said, yeah, we're good. So we've done a lot of these. So we're always in the seat to go. Where we go with how we get called out, we kind of leave that up to the officers because we're not going to pay overtime if somebody come in here and sit. If it's not needed, we don't know if the storm is going to come in. So as the officers are patrolling, if they're seeing intersections or areas that, you know, they might be having vehicles pulled over or a collision or somebody sliding through an intersection or they hear of it, that's when we get the call either direct or through dispatch. And that's when we start pulling our teams in and we start working our our stuff. In addition to that, I wanted to bring up that we also have IGAs with other cities and counties. And in the past, we've gone over and we've helped Dallas when we were flooding, but they were flooding worse because the floods came from up in the mountains down. So we have helped the city of Dallas, the city of Monmouth and us have helped each other in storm events with equipment or sanders. But we also help each other a lot, Monmouth and Independence, not day to day, but throughout the year with, you know, equipment exchange if needed. Like if we have a big project where we need an extra dump truck, then let's use a dump truck. If their tractor machines broke down or their back trailers broke down, they might come over and ask to use ours. In regards to the counties, we have helped other counties in the past, like with the bridge of Marion County. We've helped the state when they needed water for some of the jail facilities. So we have IGA intergovernmental agreements with those as well that we can call on. So we have a lot of capabilities there. Most of the time, though, we've handled it pretty well. We haven't really, other than a little bit from Monmouth, we haven't really had to call upon anybody, knock on wood. So that's another thing. And then when the event's over, we all get together and we make sure that we track our time and our equipment. And we do that and we log it, Giselle does. And that's in case we have an event that becomes an emergency, such as some of the FEMA stuff that we've had with floods where we get reimbursed or equipment or whatnot. And then the very last thing that we do is we all get back together, we talk about it and then we either all go out to eat or we all make breakfast together and talk about how it went and and see what we could have done different or talk about how it went well and all that. So that's pretty much how we handle the events in town. And I think some of you have probably seen some of these events and and have seen this work. I know some of you council members, some of you members, council members that have not met yet. But anyway, if you have any questions, feel free to hit me up.
Thanks, Ken. I really appreciate you taking the time to visit with us. Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just one quick thing that that I think Ken didn't mention is they also, when they're doing their debrief, they also are coming up with written plans so that each time they have one of these events that they make sure that they've got a documented what happened in the last one so that they learn from from each event. And that gives them a body of information to make sure that they're they're checking all the the right boxes when these things come up and they're doing their pre-planning and stuff. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So with us, thanks, Ken, for that. I actually don't have anything else on my list, but I'm here if you have questions for for me, your staff, council core.
Council core.
Tom, where did you say people should go to to get more information about the rental assistance?
I I did not say, because I just got the announcement. My understanding is the is the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. I know that they're the ones who managing it. So and the email came from them. So I would assume if you go to their webpage, you could find the link to get there. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We're going to keep moving here. I see that Josh Brant is now with us. Good evening, Josh, and welcome to the city council.
Good evening. I apologize for that. Can you see me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Well, I don't know. I'm not that computer savvy, apparently. I haven't had a mistake yet. But today and tonight seem to be a bit different. But so I do apologize and thank you so much for having me. I wanted to get a chance to talk to council because we've got kind of some interesting things coming forward in two thousand twenty-one. And I thought it would be great to kind of have, kind of showcase that, maybe get the community involved with it. And what that is, is we are partnering with a company called Recollect. And they're out of their Canadian based company, but they focus on haulers and scheduling. And they actually have an app for it. So it's a bit, it's a bit advanced for us as we're slowly moving into the generation of things now. But we're hoping to have an app available for all of our customers. Optimistically, I would say it would be end of March. I'm guessing it could be till the end of April. The reason for that is it's about a fifty-point checklist. It has to do with our routing and scheduling and it it takes a little bit of time on my part, my secretary's part to be able to get that information and then it processed on the app side. So a little background on that is I, they reached out to me about maybe a year ago, maybe a bit longer. We just weren't quite prepared for that. We were trying to kind of get, throw some ideas around and we're still looking at things. And of course, unfortunately, the pandemic hit and it kind of changed kind of the direction of how businesses are doing things now or how it will be in the future. I'm not sure. Of course, you know, we love the face to face. We've always been that way. But of course, it's just kind of, there's a barrier in that right now. And the best way to get information across is tend tends to be digitally. So I decided to move forward with that about four months ago. So we're in the early stages of it. I had to somehow become an app developer and I have no clue how I did that or what I did for it. But somehow I completed the checklist. Okay, so we're good to go with that. And we're kind of in the early stages. And the big things for this, and I think council is going to really enjoy this is because there's so many questions around recycling, is the three major parts of it is a waste wizard. It has a waste wizard and then it has a service kind of guideline education section. And then the last part of it is basically a notification reminder and service calendar. So some of the biggest kind of call volume things we get is sometimes just as simple of whether it's yard debris or recycling. So kind of help control that, especially without our office being open to guests. This is a great way for us to reach out in in many different platforms as we can by platforms more from the cell phone to an email, computer, etc. So it gives us a great opportunity to not only have it on our website, which we do now, but now those with a phone or access to a computer will be able to actually add notifications through this app that it will even send them, hey, give me a reminder at ten PM the night before service that, hey, I got to get those carts out and which carts to come out, whether it's recycling or yard debris. So that's that's going to be really helpful. We're still going to do the stickers for those that aren't electronic savvy. We're still going to try to, we're going to keep that out on our website. And then, of course, the word of mouth or walking out on your street and looking down and seeing how many neighbors are right or wrong tends to be sometimes helpful as well. And then again, I'm long-winded, so please step in anytime. But the other big thing is the waste wizard. This is what kind of attracted me to this program the most. So what'll happen is it has pre-generated maybe 2,000 items. And then I have to go through and add anything that we do differently and add whatever ID necessary for a product. What that does is for an example, if you are unfamiliar with where styrofoam goes. Styrofoam is not a recyclable material for us as haulers to pick up curbside or at our recycling depot. It can be recycled in Salem. So what somebody would do is they would type that into the waste wizard. It would generate, it does not, it would go in the trash or you can take it to this location this time and it provides as much information for it. So for plastics, you know, you type in plastic bag, that would say this goes into the trash. And so it's kind of a, it's a whole nother way to kind of meet not only our education requirement, but I think, uh, you know, I think hopefully the customers, customers will maybe take that extra little step to just look on their phones since they can kind of do that at any time. Hopefully they can get some of that contamination out of the stream. Because of course we're still trying to work on that, uh, not only as a, as a hauler, but as a state and, you know, as a country. Uh, and then not only that, but the entire world. So that's a really exciting feature that we can hopefully take a ton of advantage of. And with that, even though this I, this is kind of, I have to learn a little bit more on this, but you can kind of send out some blasts to cell phones or to email. It is something that is only signed up for. It is not something that I have access to every customer. It is simply if you're interested in it, it can allow us to either give any service changes that may have happened or updates or weather like we could have on Thursday, whether a truck's down. So that gives us that option to just provide more information to our customers. And then it has some fun little games in there for, well, anybody can do it, but you know, it sees how good you are at recycling and what you know about your hauler and, and just little things like that. So I don't have the exact details because we're still working through this onboard tracking kind of checklist. But I thought it'd be good to reach out to the communities and kind of let them know that that's something that we're really working on. Um, and we're hoping that the city is, is really interested in that as well. And the opportunity that this website gives you is you're allowed to put this. It's a, it's a program that also is an app, but you can put this program on city websites if they're interested. So if somebody is coming into, uh, into the area, uh, they tend to look at city pages quite often. It, and they end up maybe getting to my website, maybe they don't. But they kind of do all of my branding and they make it fit into each website that it's on. So it almost seems seamless, but it gives the opportunity for just that many more people in our community to be able to find us or to at least get that part of the program moving forward. So that's kind of a quick overview. Um, and so I'm kind of open for questions in any area. But I thought that was really, um, I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this is, uh, is received well from the community. It of course gives a dashboard so we can check the analytics of who's using it, who isn't. Kind of some of those features that obviously I'll learn a little bit more as time goes. It's on a year to year renewal basis. So it's not something that we are stuck to. But the company is really good about seeing success through because they're sticking it out basically for the six, uh, first six months. And they actually do a marketing campaign with me to figure out the best possible ways to, to get this program into our customers' hands, which is always the hard thing, you know, is it? Do I put it in community notes? Do I get it in the, the pull plus itemizer observer? Do I do a video on the website? Do I? So they're going to kind of take a little bit of that and we're going to figure out this little campaign and move forward. They have some familiarity with us, not brands, but I'm a part of association, Mid Valley Haulers Association, which runs out of Salem. There's six haulers in Salem and they're in association. We kind of throw into that because we want to know what's going on and they are all a part of it and they've all seen a lot of success. They think that everybody's kind of seen that return on that investment. It seems to make the community happy, but more importantly, it's kind of one of those things that also makes council and city managers and everybody kind of happy to see everybody moving in one direction. So.
Oh, what an interesting addition. Are there questions? Okay. Are there questions? Counselor Core.
Yes. Um, hi Josh. It's always exciting to see you at council because you're so enthusiastic about what you do. I appreciate that. This sounds really exciting. I'm working with the climate task force right now. Recycling is a huge topic for us. So anything that will help people understand what to throw where is, is going to be very, very useful. My sister just moved to town and I argued with her the other day about egg cartons, you know? It doesn't seem intuitive to her where egg cartons go, but you know, we constantly have to remind people. And I like the idea of the notifications, anything to avoid that mad dash to the curb on Wednesday morning is going to be very helpful. Cause I'm one of those people that looks up and down the street too, to see what bins are out, but, um, one question I have for you, this is more about your operations than the app. What does the truck do, the truck driver do if they can't get to a bin because a car is in the way? We've been talking a lot about cars blocking, you know, intersections and, and blocking streets. What happens when a, when the truck rolls down the street and can't get to the bin because a parked car is in the way?
Well, how our policy is in place is if it's blocked, uh, we make note of it as it's blocked and my truck cannot get to it. I want, I hate to say it's a bit of a gray area because we also tried to provide a customer service. The problem is you start going down some streets and if you, my driver is getting in and out of the vehicle at every stop. There's a reason why we spend the money on all these automated trucks, not because we're lazy, but it's extremely efficient. But with that comes a little bit of safety as well. My guy getting out, not to mention, you know, people will get a little bit frustrated when we leave a cart because it's let's say maybe within a foot or two, those arms, I love to trust them and we don't have a malfunction and they're great. But we don't want to take the chance of ruining somebody's personal property to get their car. It is easier for us to make note on our route list and continue. Typically people will then call in and they would have to, they would be charged the, the $5 return fee to go back and get that cart. Under some circumstances, the driver may get out and move it if it's kind of a borderline and people have to realize we don't, we'd like to be efficient. It, it gets us off the road and out of the way. You know, all of our streets are pretty good, but the trucks are getting larger and larger. So to be able to effectively move and continue going forward versus backing or anything extra, it's very helpful and much safer. So we, we, we do our policy in place is that if it is a questionable decision or if there, if it's completely blocking, we just leave it, make note of it and then wait to hear from the customer.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Yes, Josh, I just wanted, this is Marilyn Morton, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate your attention to this recycling issue because it has been so hard to throw things away that I know that have a better eventual use than just the garbage. So thank you for pursuing all of that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, there's, there's some, there's some hope. It's going to take time. I know we've chatted, but Oregon has kind of been kind of in the forefront. They've got a steering committee right now that has been working tirelessly from 2018 to now. Trying to get things into legislation and being able to provide haulers, processors, haulers and the customers try to meet as many needs as they can, because I think a lot of people truly do feel that way. You know, it's hard for me. I take my materials to a location. I kind of go with what they accept and what they don't. And unfortunately it kind of leaves us where we may think other things should be recycled, but there's just not an opportunity and/or it is just far too expensive to do so. But some of the, there are a few things they're trying to do is to put some of that responsibility on the producers of it, not us as consumers, but more on the front side of it. The packaging material that's being used. You know, the number system is something that Oregon is trying to get completely rid of. It was something that was never created by a recycling company or a hauler. It was created by the plastic creators themselves. And so it's unfortunately been kind of, it's kind of slid into the, the way of life i- in that sense. And now we're trying to kind of rewind and, and get it dealt with. But the steering committee, like you said, they're working really hard and hopefully if we can kind of get the steps ahead of time and some of those in place to get them a little bit more involved. Then hopefully they will be able to either change how they're doing their packaging or they're going to take some of that cost on. It'll help alleviate it from, from customers in the final end. So I'm hopeful. I just don't have a timeframe for you, although I pay attention to it every week. So.
Great. I don't see anybody else flagging me. So, oh, Kathy Martin Willis.
Yeah, just, just, I, I wanted to quickly follow up on counselor course question regarding, you know, blockage and that kind of thing. I mean, is that, I, is that like a super prevalent problem? Or is that sort of an occasional thing that you, that you come across?
It's more occasional. Uh, that's why I, I say that in a gray areas. Kind of how it works is every once in a while, we know that, uh, you can tell that it wasn't the homeowner's fault, you know, you, you, sometimes we can just tell that because we're on route every week, we get a pretty good idea. Most of the time though, it is the same customer quite often and not that having that happen. And so, uh, it, you know, it's trying to kind of hold some responsibility to, you know, the customers. You know, I think they need to be held accountable for being able to get their garbage out on time and in the proper space. But you know, overall I would say it's a very, very low percentage, maybe one or two a day if that. And that's for trucks. You're looking at, you know, through two, 3,000.
I was just trying to kind of sort out if it were, it was more of a customer misplacement issue or if it was due to like volume of cars parked on the street is what I was after. And I, I think you've, you, you've answered that. So thank you.
Great.
Yeah. The one, the only difference, sorry, the only one would be is there's some customers that leave them on the street. They don't actually return them home. Those are the ones you see more of a problem because cars will tend to just park there all week. And then maybe they don't know that they live there. But those that actually take their carts to and from their home or their garage or the side of their house or wherever is convenient for them tend to do a really good job with it. We don't see that as an issue. Now getting it out by 6:00 AM. That's, uh, that one's a little bit more difficult for people, but those that get it out of, we've seen have, have really started to do a better job at it. So that's good.
Great. Well, thank you for taking the time to visit with us today. I appreciate it and we'll look forward to, uh, seeing this as it rolls out. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. I'll, I'll hopefully be back when I have the, the final product ready.
Great. Okay. We're going to keep moving. Uh, I think our next presentation is from Gloria Butch. She's going to give us a second quarter, uh, financial, uh, a brief financial report. Ms. Butch. I see your name. Still muted. There, unmuted. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. It's always a kind of a routine here to get everything going. So I, this is our second quarter financial report. And it was pointed out to me that the headings on pages say first quarter ended December 31st, 2020. It should say second quarter ended December 31st, 2020. So it's the second quarter. We're halfway through our fiscal year. And I guess aside from, from my written report, I wanted to point out that attached in the back is the budget to actual detail for all of our funds. So my report is just covering our major operating funds, the general fund and the three utility funds. And something that I wanted to kind of talk about a little bit was that kind of summarize the revenues and that, and particularly the ones that have been impacted by COVID. And those are the library court property taxes collected in comparison to prior years. And sis, the city sponsored events. Those have all been impacted by COVID and where property taxes, those, um, you know, are, are those at some point will be collected. The lot really truly lost revenues and, or like the library revenues that there's not any replacement support for those. And with our CARES funding, there was no, we couldn't replace revenues with, uh, with those grant funds. So those are kind of the areas that we're going to be really dealing with and, and looking at closer when we're working on our supplemental budget and forecasting for, for the next several months. Let's see, as far as the beginning fund balances, and this was kind of brought up to when in my first quarter report was the significance in what our, our ending fund balances were, particularly in the general fund as compared to what we had it budgeted. And my report really lays out, I think, uh, what was what affected those, those differences. And for the general fund, the big one of course was our CARES funding. We got significantly more in CARES funding than we had anticipated. And that came in June. So we had no way to know back in March when we put, and May, when we put all of this together, what we were going to have, uh, receive. Everything else is kind of a mismatch, mishmash of, of items that cumulatively made up that difference. For, for the water fund, I just wanted to kind of point out, I say there that that it's, uh, some of the capital projects that were postponed. And so those were kind of a last minute postponement, making sure that we had enough funds to cover those projects. And I wanted to point out and say that those weren't canceled projects. Those projects will remain in our capital improvement plan and they remain in our budget. Uh, so we do still plan on spending those monies, but we just don't know about the timing yet. Expenditure wise, uh, we really are right around with the 50% mark, which would be expected for this time of year. And so aside from that, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to help answer those.
Questions for Ms. Butch. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. And it looks like we're doing all the right stuff and going in the right direction and so on time, on target and thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Gloria for the incredible work that you do every time you come to us and make sense of all the numbers. She's pretty amazing.
Yay. Okay. Moving forward, we are now going to getting to the right place in my agenda here. Okay. We have a public hearing on LA 202005 revision to FUD plane standards. And since this is a public hearing and I have a legislative hearing script, so I get to read this. And since this is a public hearing and I have a legislative hearing script, so I get to read this. This evening, we'll have a public hearing on Legislative Amendment 2020-05 to consider amending the Independence Development Code, Chapter 51 Flood Damage Prevention and Subchapter 11 Administrative Provisions. The City Council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings are recorded. This hearing is being held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type four legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing tonight, staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and/or the state of Oregon statewide planning goals. For anyone wishing to speak, we're asking you to use the speakers card that is provided. When called to speak, you'll be recognized. You must state your name and address for the record. Before we begin, does any counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? Anybody have a thought? I don't see anybody saying yes, so we're going to continue. I will now open the public hearing for LA 2020-05 Development Code Amendment, subchapters 51 Flood Damage Prevention and Subchapter 11 Administrative Provisions. And this, and I turn it to Mr. Evander, who will please give the staff report.
You bet. Hi there, council. It's nice to be with you tonight. I'm here. Yeah, I'm here to present on these changes to the flood hazard regulations. These changes are largely, well, I'll say entirely required by the state. One of the things that they do is, once every few years, they come out and they conduct an audit of our flood plan regulations to make sure that we are consistent with the national with, with the FEMA standard and all of that stuff. So they did that. We do have the, the details of our flood audit that we got from the individual who came out. We put that on our website. So, and it's cited in your council packet if you're, if you're interested in that. So basically they go, they go through, they look in stuff, they ask any sort of questions that they might have. Then they also go through our regulations and as they go through our regulations, they really have a boilerplate checklist that they look for in every community. Do you have the appropriate definitions? Do you have the appropriate way to treat recreational vehicles? All of the sort of things, they go down this checklist. And then they give it to you and they say, well, you, you got to change your code to address these things. That's essentially what they did. Now, our code was, I mean, it's so similar to what they want us to do, but rather than sort of going in and little by little, making a whole bunch of little changes, we felt like, let's just adopt the state model code, which it looks like ours was based on in the past. I think the state just changed their model code. We said, okay, let's just go in and we'll adopt this state model code again. And hopefully, and I mean, that will address all of the issues. Now, what are some things that have changed as part of this update? Well, one of the things is they now require an elevation certificate at the time of
You've locked up. Fred, you're frozen.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I apologize. This is why I've been doing this. I, I thought our internet was better. I apologize. So.
What happens when you're in Dallas?
They now require an elevation certificate at the time of?
At the time of application. Thank you, Kathy. I sure. So they now require an elevation certificate at the time of the application. The fact that they require this, then we currently require elevation certificates at the time of build, at the time of foundation is in and then at the time of a final. So we already require two elevation certificates. This would be a third elevation certificate. So that's one of the things that's changed. Also, they, they want us to retain more documents. They want us to submit boundary changes to FEMA. All of those things are in the code. They have a slightly expanded section related to variances. They've sort of shifted around in the code where various things are. For example, there's currently in our current code, we have all the requirements related to flood openings. In the residential section, they want us to put those requirements for flood openings in their own section. So you'll see that the flood opening section has switched out of the residential section over to just a standalone section. They've got new standards for garages. Currently, we treat those as sort of part of that residential section too. They've put them in their own new section. And one thing that's new is there is new standards for smaller structures such as like little sheds and, and we have added fences. So just to make it clear what we're supposed to do and the, and the instance of fence. Somebody wants to put up a fence and, and the flood plane was, how are we supposed to do that? So we did add fences and we put it in the pertinent structure thing. That's the one thing that we changed from the state model code. So based on that, we sent notice of this. Oh, yeah, one more change. One thing that we did in tandem with those changes is we suggested that we remove a requirement related to noticing these, these flood hazard applications. Currently, we send out notice when we receive one of these applications to residents within 250 feet of the project site. That is great. We love to give notice. We love to have our citizens, our residents know what's going on in the community. But unfortunately, the thing is pretty much whatever response we get, if the application still meets the standards, we've just got to approve it. So if we say, hey, we've got this house coming in and somebody says, no, it's horrible. Well, if they're still meeting the elevation, if they're still raising their house up, if they're still including flood openings and all of that stuff, we have to approve it. So it's one of those things where we're asking for public input and then we can't actually, a lot of times, you actually use the public input in an effective way. And so basically, what I proposed originally and then the planning commission agreed with on a six to one vote was that we remove that notice for just standard flood flood applications and, and keep the notice for things like flood variances. That approach is similar to Silverton, Salem, Dallas and Corvallis. I just looked at a few communities. It's not similar to Monmouth. Monmouth gives the 250-foot notice for, for all applications, flood plane applications. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that's in there too. We did send out these code changes. We sent them to everybody in the flood hazard ordinance area and in a flood hazard area. We sent out a mailing to them. We got enough, I got a number of calls about it, just asking for clarification about what was changing. And I try and walk folks through, hey, what are you planning on doing? What sort of things are you looking to do with your property? So, so that happened. We did hold a public hearing on it. We noticed that public hearing. We sent the changes to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. We did all of that stuff. We did get two comments. Both of those should be in your packet. One was just a, a request to retain the public notice provisions. And the other was a comment from somebody that said they wanted their right to appeal to be preserved, to appeal the, the code change to be preserved. And basically, he, 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 he sent that comment in because it says, hey, you have to reserve your right to appeal right there on the thing that we sent out. So he said, I want to reserve my right to appeal. So, so that's basically it. The planning commission heard it. They did vote six to one to forward a recommendation of approval to you. That one negative vote against the, the change was primarily, I think, because of the public noticing provisions. So I think that's about it. Are there any questions about these flood hazard changes?
Questions for the staff presenter? Yes, Counselor Roden.
Now, these changes aren't retro, correct?
That's right.
Everybody okay? Okay, I'm going to keep moving. Is there any public testimony that needs to, that anybody wants to make a public testimony on this? Karen, is there anybody out there to? No. Okay. So without that, and there's no more questions at this point, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Council members? We are now in deliberation. Does this meet with your okey dokey? What do you think? Is everybody okay?
Yes.
Okay, this is a two-step process tonight. We have to first go through, which is on page 81. We have to approve the report, adopt the findings and conclusions in the staff report. And then we can move on to the ordinance if, if that, if everybody's okay. If somebody would care to make a motion, that'd be great. Counselor Martin Willis? I can't hear you, Counselor Willis. Thank you.
Make motion to approve LA 2020-05 and adopt the findings and conclusions in the attached staff report.
I have a motion. Second by Counselor Core. Is there a discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition. The motion carries. We can now move on to the to the ordinance, which the motions are on page 82 and you see the ordinance on page 83.
And to read the proposed ordinance council bill number 2021-03 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. Is there a discussion? For our new council members, did we discuss at a previous meeting why we're going through the, the, the three hoops? Okay, I just wanted to make, thank you. I, I didn't recall if we, if we had or not. Okay, I hear no discussion. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Hearing no opposition, motion carries.
An ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, amending Subchapter 11 Administrative Provisions, repealing and replacing Subchapter 51 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Let's go to the second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill 2021-03 for the second time by title only.
Have a motion. Second by Counselor Jobe. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries.
An ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, amending Subchapter 11 Administrative Provisions, repealing and replacing Subchapter 51 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance and declaring an effective date.
Great. And the final motion, please?
I move to adopt to the proposed ordinance council bill number 2021-03.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Takis. Is there a discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Hear no opposition, motion carries. Thank you very much. Karen?
The bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number 1587.
Great. Council announcements. Anybody have announcements to make? Great, thank you. And I want to just echo something that Mr. Pesamir said a little bit earlier. Really appreciated the hours and hours of work that this council put forth in doing our priorities on Saturday. That was a, that was a six-hour gig and I really appreciate everybody putting their, their efforts in. So thank you very much. If somebody would like to end our meeting, that would be great.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Keep your pipes warm.